I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is Genius Hour?
Hi, I'm Kaia.
I'm Dylan.
I'm Maddie.
And I'm Trevor.
And we're from Lakeside.
We're in the fifth grade class at Lakeside Elementary. So what is Genius Hour? Genius Hour is where you get at least an hour a week to go and research an interesting topic. This topic should be a big enough idea so that you can get plenty of information to put into your presentation. It is called Genius Hour because you get that hour to put together an idea. For example, mine was, how are eggs formed? You get to work on a Genius Hour project, sometimes at home, too. Google actually came up with the idea when they gave their employees an hour to work on any project that was related to their company.
How do you make a topic? To make a topic, you need to ask yourself a question, like, how do you make a movie? It has to be a question you don't know the answer to. Once you have your question, you need to come up with three subtopics. The subtopics help you get information to help you get to the answer of your question.
Some examples of our topics we did were, how are rocks and minerals found? What are causes and effects of air pollution? What happens before and after a volcano eruption? How are eggs formed?
What to do after you find your topic? You research about your topic, you get about an hour to do so. You need to search inappropriate sites. You make sure you find the copyright date. You need to list the site and the copyright date on your sources page. The information might be old, so it could be incorrect. You should double-check your work with information from the other sites.
How do you make a presentation? To make a presentation, you need to decide if you want to use Google Slides or PowToon. Once you've decided, you need to put your information in the order you want. If you randomly put your information wherever, it won't make sense. Anything you put in there has to be about your topic. If your topic is about how to, is about how do you make a movie, you should not put random cats in it.
How do you make a sources page? The final step of your presentation is making a sources page. You list the web address of the sites you used or the title of a book. Then by the tit, then by the titles, you put the copyright dates. These are some examples of sources that you could use.
Presenting our projects to our class. Once our class was finished with their projects, we needed to present them to the class. A couple students each day got to go up to the smartboard and log into their project. Each of us read off the screen, or if you did PowToon, you could record your voice to talk. If you wanted to do more of the demonstration of your project, you could bring a model of your topic to show the class. An example of this is that Trevor erupted a model of a volcano eruption.
Here are our covers of our presentations. How are eggs formed? What happens before and after a volcano eruption? How are rocks and minerals found? Air pollution, cause and effect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Does this go on, so do you pick another topic? How long, so you have an hour each week to do this? How many weeks did you do this one topic?
Um, we did it around a month or two. Like, you would be able to do it, you would be able to work on it for a month or two.
Okay, and then are doing another topic then?
So we like, there's like a pause between doing Genius Hour, like we'll stop with the Genius Hour and do other things. And then you'll pick up, pick it up again, think of another topic, and do the same thing.
Nice.
Does everyone in your class participate in Genius Hour?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And the volcano that you made, did it actually, would smoke and everything?
It worked. I used vinegar and baking soda, and it worked.
Looks really cool.
The four of you have set a high standards for our future pledges of allegiance leaders. We have not had this additional presentation at the same time, and I think you're ready, really ready for our one-to-one technology initiative in elementary next year. I was watching your discussion of Google and watching Dr. Gunlock, and he has lots of connections with, working with Google. And so he's, he's ready for that work with you in the future with his technology staff. So that's pretty exciting.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Thanks for the time.
And of course, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. Okay, should we get right into our board and administrative reports? The president's report tonight, I just wanted to share with you, I had the opportunity to go over to Oakwood this week. And did a tour, and then actually, it was so much fun, I got to spend almost an hour with third grade and working on math. It was great. Anyway, so I wanted to just share with the board and the community what, what some of the struggles that they're facing. The 150 minutes of literacy is a bit of a problem. And it's been a problem in other schools, but it's, it's a lot of hours and they're not seeing an uptick in their literacy scores. So that's, that's coming up, behavior, that's true everywhere, they too are seeing behavior issues and struggling. Teacher flexibility, that, you know, that across the district is a problem for those teachers. And they, you know, what they want is, they want more time, and they want just a little bit more, maybe autonomy, maybe more authority of teaching the way that they want to teach. And then the last thing is, as you know, we have a new math curriculum, and we also, I believe, are bringing in some new literacy curriculum and some new stuff with PBIS. And so all the curriculum keeps them really, really busy, and it's decreasing their prep time. So those are the big heavy hitters, nothing new there, but I just wanted to share with all of you. The next is the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and the superintendent's good news report for February 22nd, 2017. South Park Middle School most recently participated and took eighth place in the OASD Foundation Trivia Night. They were also the best spirit award in their dress and costumes, reflecting on the TV program Cheers. And did an outstanding job with even creating characters to reflect Cheers. The South Park Science Olympiad competed in the science event that took 16th place at the regional competition at UW-Oshkosh on February 11th. Congratulations to the 14 students in grade six through eight who were chosen to participate because of their advanced science skills. Communities at Oshkosh North High School, community students are studying the author Paul Chappell's book series, The Road to Peace, in an effort to learn more about conflict. Students are analyzing the text from, from the books, having discussions and answering difficult questions regarding the, why humans fight with each other. Although Lakeside students had to postpone their skate and ski event due to the weather, that being nice weather. They still had a great time celebrating successful first half of the school year with a dance party, cheers for teachers, and participation in competitive games of Hungry Hungry Hippos. Reed Elementary students wish to send their big thank you to Mr. Steve Eliason for providing the opportunity to learn how to cross-country ski this year. What a great way to enjoy winter weather in Wisconsin, and the timing was right, we still had snow. Thank you to Oshkosh High School Student Government who organized a very successful blood drive where there was, there enough blood was collected to potentially save 264 lives. Great job. The girls' basketball team of Oshkosh West High School recently recognized teachers for their impact. At the same time, they recognize Special Olympian athletes and took up a collection and raised some $550 to donate to the Special Olympics. Oshkosh West High School students, who are part of the O'Neill National Honor Society, recently participated in the Polar Plunge for Special Olympics, raising over $4,000. A nice job done by them. It was 30 degrees warmer than it had been in the past. Celebrations for, at Oakwood Elementary School for the 100th Day of School included performing over 100 random acts of kindness. And kindergarten students and their staff dressing and writing about what it would be like to be 100 years old. Carl Trager Middle School students participated in the PBIS Trager Life Celebration by completing several outdoor winter games. What a great way to enjoy the snow and winter activities. Congratulations to Oshkosh North High School seniors who were among only 16 students in the entire conference receiving Scholar-Athlete Awards. Criteria for the award included obtaining a cumulative GPA of at least 3.5 for seven or more semesters. And earning a varsity letter for two seasons in hockey for having zero code violations. And during their school career, what a great accomplishment for Pete, Alex, and Jack playing hockey. Shapiro STEM Academy sends a big thank you to the YMCA for hosting the Family Fun Night for 152 Shapiro STEM Academy family members. The YMCA is Shapiro's partner at learning at Powell, or Pal, with the Greater Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. Programming designed to match their needs with local schools and talents and resources of the local community organization. Thank you for many areas of cooperation with the YMCA. Congratulations to Carl Trager Middle School sixth grade students. Abby Cadell placed second out of 40 spellers in the areas of area schools in the Scripps Regional Spelling Bee. Abby will advance to the state spelling bee in Madison in March. And if she places in the top three, she'll advance to the national spelling bee in Washington. Good luck to Abby. Franklin Elementary students have been busy collecting cans and holding a penny war for the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. They're, they're, they set a goal of collecting 100 cans of dog and cat food by day 100 of the school year. The group was amazed that they had surpassed their goal by collecting some 246 cans. The penny wars brought in $1,059. They also held a pasta for pennies drive in December to benefit Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The winning class launched a lunch provided by the Olive Garden, thanks to all who donated to these worthy causes. Students in the kindergarten classes celebrating 100 days of school by writing 100 words, collecting 100 books, building a tower of 100 cups, and walking and recording 100 steps, making necklaces out of 100 Fruit Loops, and either, and decorating a shirt with 100 items or dressing like they would like to look when they turned 100. A little theme there. These activities, these two classes were reading by, reading a book by Kevin Hanks. Books participating in activities included involving those characters in those books. Students in the classes recently took a field trip to the pizza rans to learn how they make pizzas. And for how to do a, how to writing lesson. The tour included making and then enjoying their own pizzas. And lastly, you'll find a list of activities the superintendent was involved with in the last couple of weeks. And just note the outstanding musical performance by North High School, the musical, at the Grand Opera House. And for those of us who had the privilege of enjoying the last 15 seconds of a win at North High School basketball team to, to complete a winning season thus far with no losses. And tomorrow night, we'll enjoy the inter-school district rivalry with North playing West at West as the final season scheduled game for the year. But outstanding athletes, and had a chance today to talk to teachers, several teachers at North High School. And they were celebrating the fact that they had the privilege of watching outstanding athletes who were also outstanding academic students and who were very nice, wonderful young men. And when you hear teachers unsolicited speak about the joy of having these students in class and knowing them far beyond what any of us would know them as the joy of seeing a complete student athlete, both academically and behavioral-wise, what a joy to have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, are there other reports by committee chairs? Kelly, you want to add something?
Facility and Finance met on the 16th. We went over, it was quite a long meeting, we had quite a few topics. We had a written report for our budget variance. And then we also had Kim Brown and Bill Wyman came in and talked to us about, reported to the committee on the Quality of Life Community Image Collaborative Campaign. They've kind of put that together. They have found 10 organizations to agree to move forward to hire an ad agency to promote Oshkosh. So they already have 10 organizations that agreed, and those 10 are the Chamber of Commerce, the Oshkosh Visitors Bureau, the Oshkosh Foundation, the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development, Fox Valley Tech, UWO, the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, EAA, and the school district. So they got some of the big ones, they hit all the most important ones. They are going to start going out looking at Oshkosh corporations also. They put an RFP out and developed one and sent out to 18 ad agencies, and seven of them responded. They chose an ad agency named Stir out of Milwaukee to, they were hired to develop a full-fledged campaign. So they're working on that now. The first section of the campaign will be built to build pride in the community. Stir will be conducting research to find out how to put a campaign together. They want to advertise through the stakeholders. The hope is that all 10 of the organizations will contribute $20,000 a year for three years to get the project to its halfway point. The next step would be Oshkosh, after that, then the next step would be to go out to Oshkosh Corporations to help with the other funding for it. At that point, the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, the Chamber, and the Visitors Bureau, and the City of Oshkosh have all committed. EAA has not committed to this year, but they already, they will next year, their budget's already done for this year, so they couldn't. There is currently a $35,000 invoice for Stir for research and the first round of design, so that's already done. The committee is looking to fund 80 for funding assistance, and we asked, the committee asked that they come in March to do a workshop for us. The next, we also talked with Mr. Dardarsky about the weight room, and he is here, so I'm going to skip that, because it'll be redundant. Next, we talked about the North bleachers. The EJ Schneider Field bleachers have been condemned and dismantled already, they were a safety hazard. There are currently no seats there, and there is some big ballgame tournaments that happen in June there. And we have, we are, we have a chance of losing those because there's no seating during, during those. To rebuild the seating facility just under the awning portion and the bleacher structure behind home plate with a total seating of 650 people, which that's the, the number that they need to seat for those, those tournaments that they have, would cost possibly $86,300. This does not include any site prep, which would require an additional $20,000 to $25,000. Craig Leader indicated that they have sent a contract with the rental company for bleachers until June 1st for $2,000 only. So they do have them for the normal games, and, but it only seats like 100, I think they said like 105 people or something like that, I think it was. So, but they don't have anything for the June tournaments. The bleachers would accommodate, oh, 130, just need to read a little bit more. People and would be located at the first base side of the field. This is a temporary fix. There's also just suggestion to make this a collaborative effort by dividing the amount and conduct some active fundraising for it. It was the recommendation of the committee to continue to explore some combination funding. And so, and then they're also looking, it doesn't look like it'll be done before June, so they're now looking at what they're going to do for those, those big tournaments. And then we went over the Oak Lawn property that we acquired. Last month, we discussed about the property and adding parking spaces. So there's issues with the parking at Oak Lawn, which we all know, and there's huge issues with the safety of children. And then the grass there and the snow removal and so on and so forth. So if a parking lot is considered, a variance from the city will be required, and the cost of the lot could, would be approximately $215,000. If the decision is to construct a green space, the cost would be approximately $90,000 to grade it, add material, and to put in under drain, storm sewer in the appropriate area. Either way, Jim said a decision needs to be made and to complete the engineering and to be able to start to work with the city. There was a question about how the Oak Lawn PTO, the Parents and Neighborhood, feel about using this space as a parking lot or a green space. And there was no clear decision from them. And then it was noted that the north side continues to grow, and Oak Lawn is already full. So they did take that into consideration, where they were going to put the parking lot in the green space so that there was space for addition to Oak Lawn. At this point, there was a, at this point, if we were to do the parking lot, it would be smaller, and we would not extend it beyond the north end of the building. And if the street congestion could be relieved, it would be, make good sense to continue with the parking lot then, to help. So they would keep one parking lot for visitors and handicapped, and then the other parking lot for staff, and then parents would be able to go in there also and park and drop off kids. It's important for safety. It's suggested to create some parking space, but also create some green space for play. There was a request to keep an eye on the property that faces Jackson and Oak Lawn. The committee supported the minimal parking lot on the basis of safety and a combination with green space, if it can be determined how to fund it, of course. And Jim will continue to study this, and he'll keep an eye on that space on, that faces Jackson and Oak Lawn for future, if we have to add to it. Because the meeting went way over time, the 2017-18 budget preview, we had to push to the March meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other reports by committee chairs? Yes, Barb.
The Policy and Governance Meeting commenced right after the conclusion of the Facilities and Finance Meeting. And we started a little bit late, but we ended early, so that was good news. We considered four different policies last week. First one was policy 7510 on the use of district facilities. Al Winnick had brought this forward to note that the old policy included a clause about refraining from holding events on Sundays and Wednesdays in an attempt to assist other community organizations and institutions with their important events and instruction. He proposed adding a paragraph to the new policy, which we discussed. The committee determined that the last statement in the paragraph, which reads, quote, "The superintendent or designee may waive this policy under special circumstances," end of quote, would allow for any rare instances where there was a need for an event on these days. The other three policies were all related, they're all labeled the Family and Medical Leave of Absence, FMLA. One policy, 1630.01, applies to administration. Policy 40, excuse me, 3430.01 is applied to professional staff. And finally, policy 4430.01 applies to support staff. And they all read the same, but under the Neola guidelines, they're in separate areas within the policies. So the same comments refer to all three of them. Lori Myron, our executive director of Human Resources, had brought these forward and informed the committee that the policies were updated in an effort to not only reduce the size of the policy, but to also provide the most up-to-date information through the use of a link within the policy to the legal information. Lori noted that because we were referencing the laws within these policies, as the laws change, then we wouldn't have to change the policy because we could refer to the current law. So as far as the length of the policies, they just went on for pages and pages. And this will help to reduce that paper and that amount of space on our website. There were three areas that were questioned. One was required staff member notice. Number two, certification by a healthcare provider and designation of leave. I believe Lori had noted that these were three areas that were often referred to or questioned by staff. So our meeting adjourned at 10:40 that morning, and our next meeting is scheduled for March 16th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Are there any other reports by committee chairs? There's nothing under non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address us on a non-agenda item? Okay, hi. All right, how about the agenda? Anybody want to address us on the agenda items? No? All right, great. So first workshop is naming the Oshkosh West High School Weight Room. Mr. Dardarsky.
Good evening. Here to request on behalf of Oshkosh West High School your consideration later tonight for naming our athletic weight room after an alumnus of Oshkosh High School by the name of TJ Rogers. Just want to give you a little quick background about how we got to this point. So about a year ago, we've seen a dramatic increase over the years in our FIAID classes in the strength and conditioning area. The amount of space that's available in the weight room that was built in 1995 just wasn't conducive to the number of kids we had. We're seeing an increase in our summer school classes, so we decided to take a look at expanding the weight room. During that time, our FIAID department put together a budget, which was a wish list of equipment needs. They submitted that to us. We took that to our booster club, and they said, we'll get the campaign rolling, we'll make a donation to expand the room, which we did. After that time, we met as athletic department amongst our coaches. We talked about all trying to work together to raise this money. We created a committee, that kind of looked into some different fundraisers, and we've been actively fundraising since about the spring of 2016. We, we've done just about every fundraiser you can think of, including sheet sales. The other day, we had a alum, alumnus of Oshkosh West run a professional wrestling event at the school and donated 100% of the proceeds. So anything that can raise money that's good for us is something we've definitely looked at. We also had our student athletes invoke in a letter-writing campaign if they so desired to. That led to a student contacting a member of the family, which then precipitated in me getting an email from an individual by the name of Valetta Massey, who's the wife of TJ Rogers. He's a very accomplished alumnus of Oshkosh High School, and they requested some information about how we were doing in our fundraising. And I kind of put together a little outline, gave a range, and they responded back, we're considering a donation of $52,000, which was based, that number came from a budget that I had kind of submitted. So we talked about that at Oshkosh West High School administratively, if we would be in favor of naming rights associated with that level of donation. We were ecstatic and excited, reached out to Mr. Mack. He reminded me of our policy for naming rights. So the next step was going to Facilities and Finance, which we did, and we shared that information with them. So Board Policy 7250 does allow the, the school district's Board of Education to provide for naming rights if an individual has made significant contributions to the enhancement of education, or to the district in particular, or to the well-being of the district, community, state, or nation. And Mr. Rogers, we feel definitely would meet that criteria. Just a little bit of background on him, he's a 1966 graduate of Oshkosh High School. He attended Dartmouth, also earned He attended Dartmouth, also earned his master's and PhD from Stanford, founded a very successful company by the name of Cypress in nineteen eighty-two, and built the company into a very successful organization. He has been inducted into the Oshkosh North High School Hall of Fame. He's also recognized as a distinguished alumnus of Oshkosh High School. So with this donation and the naming rights, it would allow us to do something that would impact a tremendous amount of students at Oshkosh High School. This is not an athletic-only facility. Strength and conditioning is a very popular class in physical education, and it definitely promotes well-being, which are, health and wellness, which is important, I think, for any student today. So that's our, that's how we got to this point. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. Yes?
Just a quick question, Mr. Jedarski. Under your major point B, you noted that your goal was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and you've raised about fifty thousand so far. So the donation from the Rogers family would still bring you some dollars short. What's the plan to?
Well, we've got a couple of things planned this spring. Our booster club's single biggest fundraiser is Battle on Bagel. Unfortunately, the weather is not helping us this year, so we were very confident and hopeful that our booster club would make another donation. We've also got a fundraiser going on tomorrow night at Oshkosh West. We're still receiving donations through our letter-writing campaign, so if we needed to, we might follow up with our spring student athletes and see if they'd be willing to continue again. So we are hopeful that a hundred and twenty thousand dollar figure would get us everything that we would hope for. If we get close to that, we can at least get the majority of the equipment, which is what is needed. Other things are, you know, dumbbells, some aesthetic improvements to the room, so with this type of donation, we'd be able to get there, even if our other spring things come in a little short.
To give a plug to your fundraiser with Battle on Bagel at Southwest Rotary today, which has been a big supporter of the Battle on Bagel event, we learned that the communication maybe hasn't been very clear to the public in terms of the fact that the ice fishing part of the weekend has been canceled. However, the Big Fish Fry inside the huge tent is on, and there is a band performing Friday night. And so they are hopeful that the public will still turn out to that, and so if they do, they will be writing you a bigger check, so that's.
Yeah, and they benefit a lot of different youth conservation initiatives, so it's, yeah, I hope the public still comes out and supports the event.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I wish to express my thanks specifically to Brad and supported by Aaron Cole, principal on the whole aspect of taking on this initiative and aggressively seeking both through numerous ways, dollar contributions that help greatly, that both enhance certainly athletics, but this is really truly an instructional facility. And having observed our teachers working with students in weight room activities and fitness activities, it's certainly a valuable contribution to the entire health of the school, as well as fulfilling course requirements.
And I just also want to thank everybody at West that's been associated with this fundraising campaign. We've been under a lot of different people, have helped in a lot of different ways, and it takes a lot of people to accomplish anything. So we're very fortunate to have a lot of people step forward behalf of our school, our project.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, going right into the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I've been asked to pull number nine. Are there any other items? All righty. The board will consider approval of one, minutes of January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, regular board meeting. Two, minutes of January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, executive session of regular board meeting. Three, minutes of February eighth, two thousand and seventeen, regular board meeting. Four, minutes of February eighth, two thousand and seventeen, executive session of regular board meeting. Five, bills payable. Six, personnel, A, appointments, resignations, and salary schedule. Seven, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen district calendar. Eight, calendar modifications for four twelve seventeen, five ten seventeen. Ten, revisions to policy one six three zero point zero one, family medical leave of absence. Eleven, revisions to policy three four three zero point zero one, family medical leave of absence. Twelve, revisions of policy four four three zero point zero one, family medical leave of absence. And thirteen, naming the Oshkosh West High School Weight Room after TJ Rogers.
So move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye.
Aye.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye.
Aye.
Olsted?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye.
Aye.
Eliason, aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number nine. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the revisions to policy seventy-five-ten, use of district facilities, as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education. So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I had asked that this be pulled in order to offer a friendly amendment to this in keeping with our strategic plan, which has a goal related to education. And so I would like, I've moved to amend the motion by adding this sentence after the final blue sentence you have, which ends with the word "special circumstances," to read, "The superintendent shall inform the board of any and all such waivers." Now, the purpose of that is that when we get to the spring and we have spring sports that have to be rescheduled, very often a Wednesday night is in play. And it may not be possible to bring the board.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Amendment carried.
Okay, and then now we're going to vote on resolution nine.
As amended.
As amended. Do I have to, I don't have to read it again, do I? Okay.
Yeah, the whole thing.
We need, would you like to discuss anything else before we vote? I think we're ready.
Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing individually considered, under individually considered resolutions. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay, are there any announcements? All right.
There are.
Sorry. I would just like to announce that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards is sponsoring a Day at the Capitol on Wednesday, March fifteenth, and I don't believe we have a board meeting that night. It's an opportunity for school board members throughout the state to gather in Madison and to have friendly conversations with their lawmakers about many of the education issues that are being considered and have been put forth by either members of the legislature or the governor's office. And I've never attended one of those in the past. I do plan to attend this year, but people who have attended have informed me that these are really worthwhile, that the lawmakers appreciate the opportunity to find out what impact proposed legislation may have on their respective histories, so.
And I have registered also for it, and if any board members are interested, I can at least travel with five individuals, or four additional individuals, or so, so if you're interested, let Sherry know and be glad to drive.
Great, thank you.
So register through WASP or contact.
Sherry will take care of it for you.
Okay. Okay, any other announcements? All right, executive session, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, one nine point eight five one C, Wisconsin statutes. A, preliminary notice of non-renewals for temporary contracts. And two, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons, one nine point eight five one F, Wisconsin statutes. A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who, while not at school, or while not under the supervision of a school authority, which endangered the property, health, or safety of others at school, or under the supervision of a school authority, engaged in conduct which endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee, a school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled, and engaged in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, one two zero point one three one CE, Wisconsin statutes. B, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who, while not at school, or while not under the supervision of a school authority, which endangered the property, health, or safety of others at school, or under the supervision of a school authority, engaged in conduct while endanger the property, which endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee, a school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled, and engaged in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, one two zero one three point, point one three one CE, Wisconsin statutes. And C, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and engaged in conduct which constitutes repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules, one two zero point one three one CE, Wisconsin statutes.
Well done. So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Gerzog?
Aye.
Gerzog, aye. Motion carried.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.